Alright. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Welcome to the Legal Women Voters Candidate Forum for the Moorhead Public School District. We have a special election coming up on November 7th, and we have thirteen candidates, not all of whom are here this evening, that are vying for a one-year, unexpired term on the Board for the Moorhead Public Schools. That election is on November 7th. If you have questions about where your voting place is, those sites are posted on the Moorhead Public Schools website, and polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The rules for tonight, we're going to allow each candidate to make an opening statement. We're going to have a minute for opening statements, a minute for each candidate to respond, and then a minute for closing statements. And Lois Altenberg is our timer here in the front. She will be holding up cards to give you an idea of your time. And then a stop. We also have cards. They look like recipe cards. They are in the back of the room. We welcome all the attendees to take a card and write down your questions. When you have a question that is ready for the candidates, hold it up and one of our volunteers will come and get that card from you. The Legal Women Voters, just briefly, we are a nonpartisan political organization. The Legal Women Voters of the Red River Valley is both sides of the river. We're one of the few in the country, chapters that is North Dakota and Minnesota, and we primarily do candidate forums. Our job is to educate voters on issues and candidates and encourage participation in the process. I'm going to allow each of our candidates to introduce themselves for one minute. Tell us who you are, why you're running for the school board, and we'll start on this side, and then we will rotate. And if I make a mistake, please feel free to correct me. We will start first with Amy Orell.
You can just sit right there. Good evening. My name is Amy Orell. I am a Moorhead, born and raised, with a strong investment in our community. I am here looking for support for the school board. I am a mom, I am a nurse, and I am a businesswoman. I feel like I have a strong package to make well-rounded decisions that will greatly benefit everybody in the community. I'm an advocate. I have a high moral compass. I feel like I have the ability to make decisions that promote the greater good and will really bring great results. I'm creative, and I'm very used to making decisions on a daily basis that impact a very large group of people. I work in an industry where we have a high demand for quality and often a limited resource pool, so every day I practice the lean concept and really try to make the most out of every situation. I thank you for this opportunity and for welcoming me tonight to this great event.
Thank you. Next candidate is Elijah. Good afternoon. I'm Elijah, originally from Africa, and I'm also an American citizen, and I'm part of the school district. I work as a custodian, so I know what it is to negotiate, and I know what it is to talk to management. I worked originally from my country, I worked with Social Security, so I know networking, I know how to talk to management to take care of the middle class. As a servant, I worked with institutions as a custodian, and I know what it is to become a bottom-class employee, so I know how to negotiate, I know how to relate to people. And I work with Social Security, I serve as an inspector, and I have documented, I'm the Assistant Director for my institution. I have documented proof to that, that I have a lot of experience back home and coming to America. But you know, most of the time you come to America, they discredit your credibility. But I have a vast experience of working with people. I get networking, I know how to solve problems, I know how to relate to people. Before I became Assistant Director, I worked with the worker union, which I took part strongly to negotiate with management to see reason to increase employees' benefits, so I know how to negotiate with people. And also, I'm also a former soccer player. I can assist the community, I have a lot of impact of making the contribution. I do a lot of things back home, so I don't like to talk about, and I can show you documents that I failed when I was playing soccer, so I have a lot of things to contribute towards society in this community. Thank you very much. And you give me the chance, I will prove it.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Cara Glow.
Good evening. My name is Cara Glow, and I work for the city of Fargo in community development. I have two young children who are just beginning their school journeys here at Moorhead Public Schools. I was born and raised in a small town in the middle of South Dakota. My parents owned a heavy road construction company for twenty years. They taught us about hard work, fierce love, and the importance of taking care of others. Those lessons are fundamental to my professional life and my personal life. I'm running for Moorhead School Board because I want to support students, support teachers, and support families. Roughly one-third of the students in Moorhead Public Schools are enrolled in the Free and Reduced Price Lunch Program, but that program does not meet all of our students' needs. So I, to creatively address this budget shortfall, I organized a fundraiser this summer, the PB&J School Lunch Fundraiser, that raised over $3,000 to pay off some of the school lunch debt. We should strive to create an environment where teachers feel valued and have the resources they need to focus on students, and we can do a better job supporting families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Lisa Hague.
Good evening, everyone. I am running for the position of the school board because I'm willing to bring a fresh, new, creative outlook to decisions that will need to be made. My husband and I have three children in the school system right now, a fourth grader at Dorothy Dodd's, an eighth grader at Horizon Middle School, and a junior at the Moorhead High School, so I know the schools well, at least those three. I would like the chance to help shape where the education of our children will go in the Moorhead School District. I'm also the owner of the quilted ladybug here in Moorhead. I have an interior design degree background, and I've held various positions on different boards, one of which is the Fargo-Moorhead National Association of Women in Construction. I would give a fresh, new, creative opinion on every task given to me. I have lived in Moorhead for seventeen years, I've been in the Fargo-Moorhead area for over twenty-five now. I would like the chance to give my opinion and outlook on the future of our schools.
Thank you. David Hallman.
My name is David Hallman, and I'm a candidate to be a member of the Moorhead School Board. I have five children, one currently, and numerous foster children, who have received their educations in the school district. All of the children received a good education, and I would like to be part of continuing that precedent. I believe the Moorhead School District has room for improvement, and I hope you will give me a chance to be part of the improvement process as a school board member. I believe that transparency, taxation, and poverty are some of the issues that need to be kept in the forefront of issues for the school board. Transparency is the best disinfectant, and the board needs to be available and open to the public to maintain their trust. We need to keep taxation at the lowest possible level, so we encourage new development while not taking people into poverty while paying their taxes. We need to take a community view of poverty so children can learn in school and not be worried about whether they are hungry or have a place to sleep at night. I am a social worker also. I have served on numerous boards at the local and state level in the past. During that service, I have shown the ability to listen, research the subject being discussed, and come to negotiated solutions taking into account all options. I believe it is very important, while serving on the board, to understand you are one of many opinions on the board. I'm looking forward to the discussion with other candidates and the public tonight, children truly all their future, and I'm looking forward with your vote to help them reach their goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate is Rul Johnson.
Hi, my name is Rul Johnson, and excited about the growth in Moorhead. We're seeing that across the city and the school district as well. With the growth comes a lot of challenges. I think there's some areas that the school district is doing a really good and efficient job with, but there's also some areas that I believe as a school board and as hopefully your next school board member that we'd like to kind of put a spotlight on and a focus on. I think in the decision-making with the growth, we need to have some deliberate and thoughtful approaches on how we look at the issues of taxation and budgets, the supports that we provide to the teachers, and just have an open dialogue with the community. I believe that there's a lot of good things that have happened, and I believe there's a bright future ahead, and I'd like to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. David Markwart.
Hello, my name is David Markwart, and I'm running for a school board because I fully support public education. I've been an educator in Fargo Public Schools for the past nineteen years, so I have had the wonderful experience of getting to see the wonderful things that public schools get to offer our children. I'm running also because I want to serve our students at a level that brings an educator's voice to the policy that are being made for Moorhead Public Schools. I think it's really important for public school teachers to have a voice in what's being decided, and I think it's a great avenue for the board to have someone on there as that. I also want to invest in our teachers, because an investment in our teachers and our staff is an investment in our students, and our students are the greatest thing that we need to take care of. And I also want the students leaving Moorhead Public Schools to be well-rounded students and ready for life. I'm an advocate for children and passionate about ensuring that our schools offer an environment for learning and building dreams in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. David Thingwald.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. It's so wonderful to see so many people interested in the Moorhead School System. I'd like to thank the Women's League of Voters for putting this event together. I'm running for the Moorhead School Board because I have a deep gratitude and respect to the Moorhead School District. I have two young boys, a sophomore and a junior, and the last eleven years I've watched them, witnessed, I've watched them grow from boys to young men. Through their journey, I've had the opportunity to experience the school system as a whole, and I have a desire to give back to that whole. I feel that I'm qualified to represent the Moorhead School Board. I've worked for the last twenty-four years in the construction industry, and I'm currently working as a project manager. Though I have the work experience, my greatest asset is my love for children. There's nothing more rewarding than seeing a child achieve success on the field or in the classroom. I have an interest in our, I have invested in our community by coaching soccer, baseball, football, and hockey. I've also served on the advisory board that picked the architects and the construction managers for our current expansions and remodels. I've served on the advisory board at M State. I'm a member of the IEC Apprenticeship and Training Board, and I've also taught continuing education for the last eight years. I look forward to the challenge of learning more about our school systems and being part of the Moorhead School Board.
Thank you. Keith Vogt.
My name is Keith Vogt. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, Moorhead Public Library, MCAM, the fellow candidates. It's exciting to see this many people running, and of course, everybody for showing up here tonight and watching it online as well. I feel I'll be a great candidate for education and for all children within the district. I truly care about Moorhead, our schools, and I have a passion for our school district. I've become involved in Ellen Hopkins PTAC as president, and I've been involved in a task force that looks at what a Moorhead graduate would graduate with, what types of skills they should have, and what types of things they should learn well here at our school district. I know there's a lot of work involved, and I don't take that lightly. There's a lot of learning to do, and I'm a fast learner. I want to be fully immersed in the school district if elected. I'm a great listener, a team player, and I feel that I can serve as an effective bridge between lifelong education professionals and the local community. I look forward to everybody here voting, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our first question, we're going to start with Elijah, and the question is, what are the primary issues and the biggest challenges facing the public schools in Moorhead right now? Be sure and use the microphone, Elijah. Thank you.
One of the main things on my general focus is have to do with security protection of all campus. And you see, a lot of the people, originally for me, I'm from Africa, I came to the States, and I noticed a lot of people just walk on campuses and kill the generation of this country. So my more emphasis would be focused on security protection, because when the kids are not protected, we don't have a future in the United States of America. So my emphasis will have to do with all of the school district should have security, gun alarms, nobody enter campus and just kill our children. So I would be recommending for gun alarms to be posted at all entrance of the school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I've been out talking to voters and neighborhoods around town, I have the number-one concern that I keep hearing is our need for more staffing. We need more paraprofessionals in classrooms, we need more counselors, more social workers, more gifted and talented teachers, we need more help. Our teachers are having a really difficult time delivering top-notch lessons because they are continually called upon to be counselors and social workers, so I think that that's the number-one issue.
Thank you. Lisa.
I think that we need to keep up with the technology of today. I have been through and seen Horizon Middle School now as it was just built, not that long ago, and Dorothy Dodd's new completion. There's wonderful technology there. If I can add, the Moorhead High School could use a little updating with the technology, keep up with our teenagers, and make sure that they're qualified once they get out into the world. There's such a bright future for each and every one of them that I think we need to prepare them for everything that they can look forward to in life.
Thank you. David.
There are a lot of different issues you could use for this one. I'm going to look at the fact that Moorhead currently is a little below the state average on their MCAT testing. And MCAT testing is going to go over and tell you how well your students may well do in the future. Ms. Idinas gave an excellent report on the MCAT at the August Board meeting. Overall, Moorhead Schools are a little below the state average. A lot of issues about what subgroup needed the most important, was most improvement was brought out by Board Member Altenberg. Ms. Idinas discussed that poverty seemed to be more of an indicator of lower scores than culture, race, English language students. That's where the difference is. If you're in a poor household, your chances are you're going to score a lot lower on the testing. It's an interesting but not unexpected fact. When looking at Maslow's hierarchy, it's not possible for those children who are worried about their next meal, or where they're going to sleep tonight, or not having much parental control because the parents got to work so many hours to be able to look and have access to higher levels of the pyramid of life, which would include things like establishing long-range goals or future or present educational needs. I've worked as a social worker for twenty years. I have a lot of kids in this town that are in poverty, and you ask them a question, well, what do you want to be when they grow up? And they say, I have no idea. This is fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds. They don't even know if, you know, they don't even have an astronaut answer. So we need to get involved in the community as a total community and help with the poverty issue.
Thank you. Rul.
Well, again, I'd point back to, I guess, the issue that I think kind of drives a lot of this is the growth that we're seeing within the school buildings as well. Some of the challenges that that presents are having the adequate resources available for services, for the programs, for the teachers in the classrooms, to be able to address some of the needs that they're seeing. And as we continue to grow, there will be some challenges as well within the community. I believe that the pressure with the property taxes, that's something that's going on in our neighboring county, and you hear a lot of that, and I think the way the funding mechanisms are set up, that will always be a concern, and I believe that's something that the board has done a good job in managing, what the needs are, and I believe we need to have some practical wisdom as we move ahead so that the solutions that we come up with can be sustainable. It's one thing to budget and try and address a need and start new programs, but we also have to be able to maintain them and make sure that those solutions are equitable through our different buildings as well.
Thank you. David Markwart.
Alright, I think our most, probably, current issue is going to be the high school situation because it's going to be pretty full here real soon, and so I think the challenge there is going to be, what do we do? Do we add on or do we add another high school? So I think that's a great discussion I look forward to having with the public because they're the ones that are going to be, need to have a huge say in that issue. Other issues, of course, would be state funding, because who wouldn't want pre-K to be fully funded for our schools and have those kids in school even earlier than they are right now? And we really need that funding from the state to ensure that those early, those young kids are in their schools as soon as possible, learning to read and getting ready for their education. Graduation rates, obviously, are, you know, something we need to look at and make sure that our students are ready for the future and for whatever they choose to do. And I think our last issue would be the mental illness that's going on throughout our schools and through our children, to ensure that they have the support they need with counselors, social workers as well. And so there's some big things coming up, and I look forward to the challenge, and I'm certainly qualified to help with those discussions.
Thank you. David Thingwald.
Hi, thanks. I think one of the biggest problems is the gap that we have between our privileged children and our not-so-privileged children. I think this is a real tough question. This is a real hard question to answer, and it's something that needs to be continually looked at year in and year out. It's something I feel strong about. I think we have to look at our graduation rates, make sure our graduation rates are where we want them to be. And then I think the buildings question is a big one on everybody's hearts. You know, we all want these new buildings. We don't want our kids to feel like they've been constricted during these big classrooms, but we also got to be responsible to taxpayers. We want to make sure that we're getting out there, we're letting people know why we need these schools, we got to let them know why we need some work at the high school, and when we do do that work, we got to be responsible with that tax base and make sure that they understand what we're doing. We don't need the big, grand buildings, but we need to have functional buildings that our students feel good about being in and that give them the opportunity to succeed.
Thank you. Keith.
In addition to some of the topics, of course, growth is a concern. We do need to stay ahead of the curve, at least consider the bubble of kids that's coming. A lot of my children in the elementary school and in the middle school are part of that bubble. We need to consider that. Another thing is the demands of public education. There's a lot of teacher stress out there. When I'm talking to teachers, when I'm talking in the community, one of the common themes is that our teachers are stressed, they're strapped, there is a limited number of resources. I think if you ask pretty much every school, they all could use more. There always seems like there's a better need for that. In addition, one other thing I feel that we could do better is welcoming students with diversity. Our numbers averaged from one to two percent increase each year, the past five years, and I think there's a much better job we can do there, getting those students involved, making sure they're comfortable in our schools, and helping them out with things like the liaison program and other areas that make them feel like Moorhead is their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy.
I agree with several of these. To Cara's point, I do very much feel like our faculty and our teachers could use some helping hands, and I know there's issues with funding and things that we very much need in order to support that. With my nursing background, one of the things that's driven into me is holistic care, really caring for the whole student, and I think that our district is doing really great at that, and with more support, we could continue to help shape them, not just academically, but into great people that respect one another. Another thing that I'm very passionate about is just talking to a fifth grader down the street from me last night. I said, how's your school going? And she said, you know, the big kids are really mean to me, and they're blowing their instruments in my ears, and they're really picking on me. And I think that probably goes back to resources again as well. How can we really get in there and be creative and help teach and give great experiences? Those experiences in the hallway shape what happens in the classroom and help, I mean, you can't learn when you're stressed by things like that. So I think those two things really fostering independent, individual development for all of our students.
Thank you. The next question, and we're getting a lot of good questions from our audience members here, and I'm combining some of them. The next question is, how will you address the changing dynamic with the immigration population in our schools, for example, English not being their primary language, and what other challenges might they face? And do you support the parent liaison officers who are working with the immigrants currently? If you would change that, what would your changes be? And we'll start with Cara.
I think the home liaison program is brilliant. It's a really creative program that's addressing some of those needs. I would like to see that program expanded, because I think that would be a great way to address some of those needs. I actually was discussing an idea I had for a volunteer program that perhaps we could develop at the school where we could pair new families up with families who have lived here for a while to help them get to know the community, help them navigate some of the registration stuff. I mean, it's a program that they have, a similar program at LSS that we could do at our school to help facilitate some of that stuff, because when, then you build, then you're building relationships, you're learning about the school system, you're learning about the community, and those kinds of programs have the potential to have really long-lasting effects.
Great. Thank you. Lisa.
I agree with Cara on the fact that we could definitely use what I would call a mentorship program. Families connecting with other families. You know, maybe even more so, how about a student, a mentor, that can work with that student specifically? Take them on, be their friend, show them the ropes, tell them, you know, the teachers say this, these are where our books are, or, you know, now we're going to go to the library, we're going to do this, that type of thing. You need to get more personally involved with the children. I honestly feel that that is the best way to tie them to the community and make them feel at home.
Thank you. David Hallman.
All children deserve an education appropriate to their abilities. This includes those with disabilities and those that may not speak English very well to not being their primary language. Two of the most important people in my life moved to an English-speaking country while children. My Army friend Gus Valdez came to the U.S. from Cuba when he was ten. He luckily had a fifth-grade teacher who stayed with him three times a week after school and taught him English, and he's now a very successful college graduate. That's important. My wife Sally was a refugee from Poland to Australia in 1982 when she was nine, walking into school nine years old, speaking Polish in an English-speaking country. She speaks very highly of her teachers who taught her how to speak the Australian form of English, anyway. The other day, I attended the Independence Day vote of the Kurdish community of America with my thirteen-year-old son, William. How wonderful it was to see my Kurdish-American friends celebrate their pathway to democracy of their birth country while living in a new democratic country. I asked my son how he felt at the celebration, being surrounded by people speaking Kurdish. He responded by saying how he, kind of made him understand how the refugee immigrant students must feel when they enter our schools. We didn't understand a darn word they were saying, but we were happy that they were celebrating. I do speak several languages, but not Kurdish. So we need to welcome our new cultures. I have lived all over the world, twenty years in the Army, and my wife is Australian, so I know cultures, I know how to work with people with cultures through my job, and I would represent them on the board.
Thank you. Rul.
Well, as part of my work history, I guess, I had formerly been involved with Lutheran Social Services in North Dakota as a resource developer, so I'm very, I guess, firsthand aware of some of the challenges that take place with some students who are arriving with English skills that aren't quite as easily workable in the school situations. I believe there's a lot of opportunities that we have with community partnerships that we can further develop and deepen. I know there's a lot of good organizations that are out there that are doing good work, and I think there's opportunities that we can partner deeper with a lot of different places and kind of combine the efforts that way as well. I think in addition to trying to figure out some of these situations, one of the things we need to do is continue to survey and ask the different family groups that need the assistance, what works best for them, and not just think that we can implement something without having a good amount of information to make sure that is to make sure that it's relevant to what their needs are and how things would work best for them. As far as the parent liaison officers, I'm in favor of that and I think we should continue to expand that.
Thank you. David Markwart?
Thank you. I guess as a board member, I'd be representative of the district. And so it's not a certain area or a certain part of town, but the entire town and everyone who lives in the town. And so I take it very seriously. Every day I work with students who are new to America as a teacher. And I see them and I see what their needs are and just making sure they're welcome in our schools. A lot of nonverbals are great. A smile means happiness pretty much everywhere. So even giving them a smile, giving them a high five, a knuckles, you know? Making them feel welcome first and they go home and tell their parents, "Hey, the school's a great place. You need to come and see it too." And so encouraging parents to come to conferences and being involved in the schools, family nights, finding ways to ensure that the parents are able to get to their schools and that they're aware that that's happening. I mean, those are just wonderful ways to get those people involved in the school, see how wonderful our schools are and they'll be wanting to become more involved as well. Again, investing in our teachers, ensuring that their curriculum that they receive is the best for our students, no matter if it's the, if it's elementary, EL, special ed, everything it is, that they have the most current, best resources they have to make sure that every student can learn and will learn and do a great job in the community and in the future.
Thank you. David Thingbold.
Hi, I'm in favor of the parent liaison program. I also think the best asset that our teachers can have is a family home structure that supports our teachers and helps the children out. I witnessed a principal, a former principal in Fargo at Madison Elementary handle the immigrant population. One of the things that he did is he reached out and he tried to get every family into the school and understand what we're doing. He tried to get the people who have a different culture, understand why we're doing the things we're doing. I think the more partnerships we can have between the fam, home family and our teachers, the better off we are.
Thank you, David. Keith?
The number one success factor of a student becoming successful in a high school is having a relationship with somebody in the building. Eighty, or I'm sorry, 91% of eighth graders feel at least one adult in the school cares about them. What about later grades? Are we doing enough? There's 40 different languages being spoken in the Morehead homes. That's a lot of diversity. A lot of them have never heard English before. We need to continue our liaison program. We need to continue our English learners, our EL program. It's very strong. We can do more work there. In addition, there's some community activities like the Adult Basic Education, also very limited on resources. They fill up very quickly and there's oftentimes a long wait. So some of the people that need to get into these courses aren't able to because there's not enough teachers, there's not enough classes for them. The other thing we need to look at is after-school programs or after-school activities for these, for immigrants. I think there's a little bit more work we can do there. Again, we need to get them into the school district. We need to make sure they feel comfortable and make sure they have that connection within our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
So I really feel that cultural sensitivity is a great thing and I support the program. I agree that making everybody feel like they're having an equal experience. I think our students need to be taught how to interact with one another as well. My daughter, her newsletter that came home the first week, they shared that there's seven different languages in her classroom. And that was really neat and just hearing her perspective too on how many friends she has that have different languages, different needs. I think it's great that our kids are having the experience to learn from one another as well. I like the idea, Ruel, of the learning needs assessment and that's huge in healthcare as well. How do you learn best? What do you want from us? How can we tailor this experience to you? What resources do you need so we can shape it to the individual? But yes, I am very much in favor of the program and equal opportunity for all students.
Thank you. Elijah?
I remember you said, if I'm right, you spoke highly about immigrant people who come over to the United States. It makes sense. We got to look at the youth and the kids of this country, especially with me now, I don't have a lot of time to help my kids. So I'm appealing to the school district to see reason. Whatever be a letter to this situation, let them be focused on the kids. Before I get home, it's about one o'clock, what time I have to take care of my kids to help to do their homework? So at least after school, we should have a program that will be able to keep the kids there now, that behind the lesson process in order to improve their capacity. Let them be able to stay there. Let the teacher be able to identify these students who are back on the lesson performance. Let them have a steady program after school in order to catch up with other students. That would make them to be effective and efficient. So I support the idea that the school should be able to look at these people who come especially from different countries that have difficult reading and math problem. Let's focus on them to make them to be dependable future of this United States of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, I'm combining a couple of them here and I want to read a little bit what this particular audience member wrote. They start by saying, "Very tragically, they learned from the news that an 11-year-old boy from the Crookston School District in Minnesota took his own life." And the questions have to do with the mental health needs of our students. How we can address those? What role might you play as a school board member in addressing those issues? Students at risk and coming to terms with this or funding or community initiatives? What are your thoughts on that? And we're going to start with Lisa.
I really feel that if we could add more staffing to the schools, there would be more people that would notice possibly the little boy sitting in the corner, the little girl who's on the swing set all by herself and, you know, she's not even swinging, she's just sitting there. When one of my children was in second grade, I asked her what her favorite part of the day was, you know, like you do with your children. And she replied, "I don't have one." And I said, "Really? Yeah, like what about recess? Don't you just love going outside and playing?" She said, "No." "I don't." Being slightly heavier set, she didn't get up and run around with the rest of the kids. She was the one sitting in the corner, waiting for somebody to come talk to her. So if there's more people around the students who actually care, I really think that we can reach out to those individuals that need a little smile, a fist bump, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Well, it's kind of a sensitive issue. I've been a social worker next month for 20 years at the county. I do handle adult intake and I had too many that I can mention. People call up and tell me they want to kill themselves on the phone. So I know firsthand, talking with those people, and most of that's all about being able to as best you can recognize the symptoms of people that are calling out for help. Everybody's calling for help. It's just we don't have the right ears on to be able to hear that. So I think to make sure that you have, and I don't know exactly what each school has, the right social workers, the right teachers being trained on those and putting that training out to the people, everybody that sees those children. If you're cleaning the building, if you're serving the food, if you're administrators, if you're a teacher, everybody in those buildings needs to know what those symptoms are and not be afraid of talking to the school's social worker, counselor, whoever happens to be there and putting that flag up. There's nothing wrong with doing that. And I think a lot of people are very hesitant to say, "Oh geez, they're acting a little strange. Oh well, I'll just go do my next task." You need to be an advocate for those children in that way because too many take their lives for the stupidest reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruel?
It's a problem with no simple solutions. You know, the mental health needs of the students are real. We do have students that have struggles and issues that they bring in the building with them every day. I think there's different approaches that can be done. I know some programs are more of a peer-to-peer mentorship where students are paired with others. And I think that that relational approach that was mentioned earlier is something that would be a strength when looking at students and trying to work through some of the things that they have struggles in. I know there's always stigma involved in the area of mental health and anything that can be done within the schools to try and reduce that stigma and let students know, hey, it's okay to talk about these things. That can go a long ways to having an impact on students that struggle. So there's, like I said, not an easy fix or easy solution, but there's little things like that just in talking about things that can go a long ways to make a difference for one student. It might not help everybody, but the ability to just talk about those things and give that supportive environment, I think, can go a long way.
Thank you. David?
All right, thank you. I think more, you know, they, Morehead has the day treatment plan, or the day treatment for students and they have social workers and they have counselors. Do we need more? Absolutely, it'd be wonderful, but again, it comes with money, right? So we have to be creative with what we do. You know, as a teacher, we a lot of times make up a list of students who we see may need a need and we make sure that there's a list of them. We see those students in the hallway. We're like, "Hey, how's it going today? How was your night last night?" Make that connection with the students. They feel that there's someone, that someone is valuing them and they see an importance in them coming to school every day and being a part of our community. It's just so vital that we make those connections, you know? Even as a parent of my own kids, I tell them, "If you see someone who's sitting by themselves, go over and say hi to them." You know, just get involved, making sure that you see everyone is making a connection and we're just being a part as one community. It's so important. And so I think just making that connection and involving all of us together is just vital and making sure they all feel valued when they come to school every day.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. You know, as well as this unfortunate situation in Crookston, we just currently lost a Morehead graduate here recently. I've got two boys in the high school who knew him. They skated with him. They knew him personally. And to see him come home with that blank look, like why, you know? I think the one thing that I got from talking to my boys is you need that safety net, that open willingness to communicate, that you feel like you have somebody in the schools that you can talk to. We've heard about it a few different times here, kind of a partnership. I think that's a great thing. It's very hard as a school board or as a district to prevent this. But I think we have to do is support our teachers as well. We have to tell our teachers that, just like somebody else said here, you know, if you see that, don't be afraid to report it. Let's put it in the hands of people who are more qualified, who've been trained, who have the experience and let's them, let's let them reach out, you know? The more training and the more work we can do with our young children and our teachers, I think, to, you know, foster that comfort that it's okay to talk about this and it's okay to feel bad. I would love to have a place where our students, you know, feel safe just to openly communicate, you know, how they're feeling and ask for that support. I know my children probably wouldn't go talk to a student counselor. They don't, they don't have that relationship. And I think if we can build those relationships and help these kids feel safe and comfortable, that's the best that we can do.
Thank you. Keith?
As a parent of two 11-year-old twins in the Spanish immersion program at the middle school, I mean, it's, kids nowadays absorb a lot. They carry a lot of weight. They understand concepts well beyond what I believe I was understanding as an 11-year-old or as an elementary kid. I definitely echo a lot of the thoughts here. There can be more done and there should be more done. I'm very open to whatever suggestions we have, whether that be some sort of helpline, whether that be making sure they're connected. Again, faculty and staff connecting to a student is one thing. Also being connected with classmates and fellow Morehead spuds is another. I think that's a great thing to look at. The other thing we maybe need to consider is some sort of community. Obviously, as taxpayers, we are all paying for these community efforts. A lot of this falls on the school board, but maybe there is a community bridge there that can be done where we bring in people from the community, not funded by the school district. I don't have all the answers. I'm willing to listen. It's a very, very difficult topic, one that definitely requires our attention. We want to make sure that that's too close to home and as David had said, there's too much stuff going on. We need to do a little bit of a better job, a little bit more sensitive and everybody needs to keep their antenna up for when they see issues that should be concerned. As Mr. Hallman had said, making sure people are aware of those symptoms is a great step as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith. Amy?
This topic is a tough one. I think there are many things that could help. I think very intentional conversations, intentional screening for distress in our students. Ask the questions and make it a very open arena for them to voice their strange feelings, their questions, their concerns. I think the attitude so many times of feedback to somebody that is struggling is, well, buck up, toughen up, you can do this, you got this. Well, when you don't feel good, you really can't just buck up. You need help. You need somebody to pull you through that and to tell you that you're not alone. So I think our students that are struggling need a really strong support network to make sure that they know that this isn't a book that's going to be written just about you, that it is widespread. And I do think teaching the signs, I don't know if everybody knows the signs, and making that education very broad throughout parents, throughout teachers, throughout people that aren't specially trained in that. And I think that those are things that if we bring it out, make it very open, make it very educated, that we might recognize the signs faster. And just again, not to keep going back to healthcare, but in my healthcare background, I've had many people that have voiced concerns about their mental health. And it is a very awkward question to ask, but it is okay to say, "Do you have a plan? Are you worried or are these just feelings that you need help dealing with?" So I think we have to ask the questions and we have to make it very intentional.
Thank you. Elijah?
Concerning the kids, what I really want to say concerning is that the last time when I, well, last month and I rented a junior high school, one of the students were hanging around and I saw a problem. You can ask my supervisor, you can ask a question there right now. The student were hanging around the bedding. I came outside about like three times to trash my garbage. When you come outside, you see the light, then you can see the person. But when you leave, the light cut off, you know, it go off. So I went, I told, immediately I went to my supervisor and told him, I said, "Look, I noticed something. A little girl sitting down there, she been there for a while. So I think I need to do something about it." And I called the police and they came to find me to tell me, thank you, the parents came. If that decision were not going to be taken, who am I know what happened to that kids? And they came to find me to tell me, thank you. If I'm lying, you can go to rent a scene and ask for young, he's the supervisor. I called the police and they came, the intercede. So even in the class, we need to talk to the teacher too. They discourage the children. I want to say that. Because my daughter came to me and tell me, the teacher told me and said, "I can't make it. Don't do that." Today, if I go to discourage myself, I will not be in America today. Because when I were playing good soccer, I went to the embassy two time. My country were in a crisis. I couldn't get my visa to go to university of Bridgeville, Connecticut because that time I was playing good soccer. I did not, in myself, I did not discourage myself. I stirred myself up. I said, "I will come to America." And coming to America, they make a difference in my life. I'm an American citizen. I keep all the trouble. I pay my taxes. I'm good. If I go to discourage myself, I will not be in America today. So let our emphasis on teachers. The teacher too, they discourage the children. When you tell people that you can't make it, you discourage them. You're not motive, you're discouraging them. You're not motive, and you're trying to make them that they can make a difference. But when you discourage them, you decrease their capacity. But you can see you can make it, you modify them, you try to make them that they can make a difference. So we should look at the teacher then too and be getting eyes on the teacher in the class there. Some of them, there's a problem of the children not going straight to by saying, "Oh, you can't make it." Wow, it discouraging. You can make it. You can move the mountain. You will really well, you will make that math to make a difference. So the teacher then we should train them, even if students not making it, you tell them that they can make it and they can come and make a difference. Because my daughter, oh, the teacher said, "I can't make it." I said, "No, you will make it." Because I never discouraged myself today. That's why I made it to the United States. So we should have that theory or training the teachers there. Even the students are there, let's encourage them. They're pushing, they're patting on the back. Let encourage classes that they can do well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kara?
I think mental health needs are a big community issue. They're systemic and the school system is not going to solve them on its own. I believe that the only- I believe that the only way to tackle big community systemic issues is through large-scale collaboration. Um, I really love the idea of full-service schools partnering with, um, county social services. Like maybe having them open a office in the school so that they are working directly with the students who need the most help and wrapping services around those students so that they can get the support that they need to, you know, manage the stuff that's going on at home, as well as the support that they need to manage classrooms and education.
Thank you. We're going to change the tenor a little bit of our questions at this point. Um, on the back table, there are, uh, some printouts that ca, contain the responses to three questions that the League of Women Voters organizer of this event, Les Baki, thank you, Les, um, sent out to all the candidates. And, um, not everyone had an opportunity to respond apparently, but there are some responses there. So this question is going to be a little bit about responsiveness of the school board, um, and transparency. What are your thoughts about filming the board meetings, recording the board meetings for, um, the general population to observe? Um, and, um, I'd like to also just include in that your perception overall of the, the role in the community of a school board member. So the filming of the meetings, your approachability or your, your, um, the transparency issue, your connection with people, how responsive are you to their questions and your perception of the role in the community? And we're going to start with David Hallman.
I am in favor of broadcasting more, Morehead School Board meetings. I believe transparency in government, any governmental agency is the best disinfectant. The more people that see what you're doing, the more chance that you'll do what the right thing is. Uh, school boards and their actions are readily available to the community. Uh, many of our citizens, disabled and those with mobility issues have a difficult time attending the meetings in person where it's being held. Many people's schedules don't allow them to attend, so they have to listen to it on the radio, video. I've tried that many times. They'll continually refer to some board that's showing things on the wall and I'm going, I don't see any board. I have no idea what you're talking about. So it's not a good thing. I also think the data, the board meetings and location in the more board meetings needs discussions. Current meetings conflict with the city council meeting. You can't go to both. And sometimes you have things that you need to do at both or you follow both. So that might be something. It doesn't allow citizens to attend both. The current meeting location is always crowded, which prevents some people from attending. It severely limits those with special needs from attending the meetings. Meetings in a larger, more disability-friendly location would better serve the public. And, uh, greater public involvement always translates to higher synergy within a school district or any organization.
Thank you. Rul?
I, I'd be in, in favor of videotaping the, the school board meetings. Um, everybody has a, a video in their phone nowadays, Facebook Live it, you know? There's tricasters, the equipment that would be able to be utilized that I think would make a pretty smooth, uh, transition to that at a low cost. So there's really, in this day and time, no real good reason not to have that transparency that we've talked about with the school board meetings. Um, I also agree that, you know, reading in the minutes or listening on the audio, it, it's not the same as a, a visual when you can kind of read the body language and kind of get a better sense of things from what's being discussed and how it's being said with facial expressions, things like that. So, um, I'm all in favor of that. As far as a role of a school board member and approachability, uh, I would, I would be an open door, uh, willing to talk about anything with anyone. Um, I think that's, uh, part of the expectation that comes with the position is that you make yourself available to people who have concerns, who have, uh, things that they want to get your opinions about. Um, I think that, that's a standard that our community has held in the past with, uh, an accessible, uh, government elected officials. And I would, I would be, um, in that mold, I guess, myself if elected.
Thank you. David?
All right. Um, yeah, I'd certainly be in favor of, um, having the, the meetings broadcasted. If it's not a huge expense, I guess I'm not aware of what the cost would be to us. Um, as I wrote my, in my, uh, report there, I'd be more than happy if, if there was some kind of grant available to ensure the funding for it. I think it'd be great because I think the funding, um, that we have, we see needs in other places, um, that are just as important. And I would, um, like to see the spending going a different direction. Just take one example. I know one main issue this last was, uh, school busing within a mile. And I, I think that's an important, um, looking at, making sure everyone has a safe way to school and home from school. And that's one way to rather spend the money than if it's a big expense for videotaping it. Uh, as a board, um, I think it's critical that, um, that we share, have a shared vision for our district. And, um, that it's, uh, developed by the stakeholders and that we see the importance of, of being together. Um, elevate, uh, public education and the student's achievement, ensuring that our students are coming out ready for, for life, right, ready to be mom and dads, ready to be, um, citizens of our community. Um, I think that's one of our important skills or duties as well. And, and lastly, um, representing our district, uh, be transparent in operations, um, and making sure that we have a secure, um, learning environment for all of our students.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. I'm in favor of, of, uh, broadcasting a school board meetings. I think there's, there's a lot of tough decisions that are made in these meetings. I think there's a lot of things that, that people don't understand. Why can't we have more? Why can't we have these things? And, and unfortunately, our board and our administrators are, are set with a, a, a set finance, a set amount of money they can work with. So when, when somebody comes back and says, you know, why didn't we get this program? It was this or a teacher, you know, and, and I think the more transparent we are, the more we'll get the support from our community. Um, when we ask for new schools, if they see that, hey, we don't know how we're going to get enough kindergarteners in these schools. We got to convert pros field and people wonder, why did we do this? You know, the more, I think that transparency will just help over with that. Uh, as a school board member, I think it's, it's our, our job to be looking at the broad scope. It's to be looking at the overall picture. What's the five-year plan? What's, what do we want to do? It's not reacting to the, the most current need. It's, it's to make sure that we're, we're ready for the future. We're ready for the things that are going to come about us. Um, I'd hope, if I was elected, I'd be as transparent as I could be. I'd love to communicate and, and listen to people's ideas. I know there's a lot of people that, that have ideas that are great. And, and, and sometimes it's so important to look at somebody else's perspective and take that into account when you're making your decisions.
Thank you. Keith?
The agenda is posted online. Um, the audio is also available online. It has been for years. The approximate number of people that listen to the audio is around 150, and it does increase for certain types of board activities. I haven't heard of a huge need outside of the forum and people requesting the video. Um, that being said, I would be in favor of having the video available online. I do know that people are working multiple jobs. They're not always able to be, uh, attending in person. We also still want to encourage people to attend in person. At the beginning of the school board meeting, there's always three minutes where whoever wants to present anything can present that in front of the board. So the board members, um, are approachable. Uh, they have their emails posted out there, their voice, or their phone number is posted out there. There, when you call them, if they don't answer, of course, it goes into a voicemail and then they get an email saying, hey, you've got a new voicemail. Uh, Mark Altenberg is the rep for Ellen Hopkins. Uh, as PTAC president, he had posted, or he had mentioned this prior Tuesday. He has had zero voicemails to date. Um, nobody has called. Uh, he has had half a dozen emails. I presume Mark is very approachable. I know that he is because, um, I've talked to him on several occasions. He's very out in the community. Um, as a board member myself, I would also encourage folks to, to speak with me, to talk with me. I would also have a sounding board of folks that I would reach out to. That would be a combination of teachers, of faculty, uh, parents, and even students. Students, of course, have a say in the, the direction of the school board as well. Uh, and we also want to keep in mind the, the communities or the folks in the community that might not have people in school anymore. So those that, uh, it's a variety of folks you need to have and you need to be able to work with and speak to. Uh, I feel that I have that and I feel that I have a good network of folks that I can reach out to, uh, in addition to being very approachable. Um, I think that, uh, the school board is doing a good job, um, getting the word out there. And people just need to reach out if there is a concern, either in person or via the school board meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Amy?
I am very much in favor of, um, filming, broadcasting. I think transparency is very much important. I agree the minutes are out there, the agenda is out there, the audio. The body language is very much part of that because I think you can gauge investment and, um, message how it was received. I, um, like I said, I am in favor of that. As a board member, um, my approach would be to be approachable. I, um, will ask questions. I will seek out input. Do you have the tools to do what your job is to be? What, can you learn? Do you have the tools to learn? Um, I very much function very openly at work. My policy as well is open door. Come on in. I want to hear it. I want to feel it with you. I want to be on the front line. Um, so I would welcome the opportunity to be invited into witnessing the great things, the things that are challenges. I, I very much learn by doing, so I would like to be a part of them. Um, I think a very big role is the advocacy for all, the faculty, the students, the parents, the community. I think that is very much, um, a key element in a board member, and I feel that I have what it takes to do just that.
Thank you. Elijah?
Yes, I support, uh, game, broadcasting the meetings for ball because it's very important for accountability. Because the people, the community got to know what the discussion you people having for them, because you people serving the public. So it makes a sense. I support the idea and dream and vision for supporting such an idea. And because when you guys discuss these things, people, you, what you guys discussing, because it is the people you guys are serving. So it makes a sense that those things be broadcast, that people be able to listen what they're saying. Because we will be acting as a policymaker, making decision for the school board. And so the school board plays a very important part. And the people in the public got to hear what, what you have to offer them back there. So it makes sense. I support the dream and vision that all meetings be broadcast, uh, because it makes a sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kira?
I think the school board should work to, um, encourage and expand interaction with parents and the community. And videotaping and broadcasting the meetings certainly helps those people have access to the, the school board meetings. So I'm in favor of that. Um, I believe in teamwork and I recognize that I will never have all of the answers. And probably my most important role, um, if elected to school board would be to facilitating ways to bring together the knowledge and expertise of others. So I would strive to be very approachable. Um, I would answer all emails, take all phone calls, have coffee, go to homes. Um, because I think that that's the only way you can really represent people.
Thank you. Lisa?
I also am in favor of the, uh, broadcasting of the school board meetings. Um, I very firmly believe that it is very important for everyone to know what is going on. Um, as others have said before, whether you have someone in the school district currently, have had in the past, or may have in the future, you need to know what the decisions are and what the options were to the decisions that were finally made. Um, that's really the only way that you can support what's going on. And as school board members, we need the support of our community. We need to know that we're doing what's right for the community. Um, as a board member, uh, my role as a board member, I, I am extremely approachable. Um, much to the dismay of my children, I am usually the one approaching others. Um, so yeah, I, I always have an open door policy, always have had, always will have. In fact, I'll probably be the one walking up to you, asking you, you know, what you think we should do to change things.
Thank you. One of the things I'd like to point out to the candidates, as you can well imagine, there are a lot of good questions here that, um, deal with things such as classroom size. Some of you have referred to that. You know, what is a good classroom size? How do you address that? Um, how do you strike a balance between, uh, equipping students to learn or enabling teachers, uh, support their learning? How do you overlap and find balance? And, and, and even, um, new Americans who are, are teachers, who have taught in their own countries, now here in this country, how can we bring them into the system? Um, so in kind of an overreaching way, um, this audience member says, the more that parents are involved in conversations, the more the students will benefit. How do you have, what are your ideas to get more parental involvement in their schools, in their students, in what's going on? And what that looks like? I know that's a hard question, but, um, like to hear your thoughts on that. And we are going to start with Rul.
No, there, there's a lot to unpack there. Um, parental involvement, that's, that's a good question. Uh, I think some of the things that were referred to earlier, um, just the availability of, of time, uh, to meet, I know, you know, parent-teacher conferences, there's a window of time where, um, you know, historically, the parents have been invited to come to the building to discuss grades and behaviors and issues that the classroom teacher might see. Um, you know, I guess there, there's timing, there's, uh, uh, just a awareness piece that not everybody's schedules are the same. Uh, we have, you know, a lot of our families are single-parent families where, where the adult is out working and they have different shift work or times that aren't convenient. And it's a hardship sometimes, uh, financially to be able to come and, and make a commitment to get to the school in a certain window of time. And those aren't easy things to solve because, um, the, the school has, uh, different needs, requirements for how staff is available and when they can be available. There's, you know, contract issues with, with that as well for, um, what your position asks of you and your availability. Um, so I mean, it's not an easy solution, but I think, uh, just having a, an open discussion and just a, a willingness to acknowledge that, um, there, there's flaws in how we do things and that we need to be open and receptive with each other to find out how we can increase that. No easy answer.
Right. Thank you, Rul. David?
Yeah, as a, as a teacher myself, you know, we're always looking for opportunities for, for parents, for grandparents, for the community to come into our classrooms and, and to be more involved. And, and so, um, I know, I know teachers are more welcome to take suggestions and, and listen to community and, and have them reach out, people reach out to them as well and, and for suggestions. Um, I know what was wonderful is when my kids have music concert, they give us an opportunity to actually go into the schools. So through elementary, um, Christmas concerts or holiday concerts, um, when they do field trips to volunteer. So they have the teachers open up, give us suggestions of when we can help out, when do you want us to help? Um, also through emails, uh, newsletters, all that information, here's an opportunity for you to come help out. I know my kids have also had like writing days where they come and show, um, their writing for the year. And we come in and see their, you know, our kids are so proud of what they've done and they do wonderful work. And so just having those opportunities in the classrooms for people to come in and, and to see that is, is one way for us to get, uh, parent involvement. And not just parents, but our grandparents and, and the whole community. And so, thank you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if we're supposed to respond to it, but you, you touched on the class size. You know, on the class size, everybody wants the smallest classrooms as possible. One of the things I think we need to do is, is also listen to our educators and listen to our teachers. A, a role model or, or a set fine line that says this many students in a class can't work in a, in a, in a privileged school as well as it would in a less privileged school. So I think those principals and those teachers who know the dynamics of those classrooms have to be leaned upon. And we need to assist them as much as we can, um, with that. So, so if they say we have a need and more pairs aren't available, maybe we, maybe we reduce those class sizes. Um, as far as getting the family into the classroom, I, I can't say enough how much I think that's important. I've, I've been very lucky to have two kids who've grown up in the system and, and I think there's limited opportunities for us as parents to get there. You go to a, a, a teacher's conference and, and you don't really get to know the teacher then. You know, back when the kids were younger, you had the, the social events. You got to kind of see the smile of the teacher. You got to see them interact. And that, when you see that- And when you see that, you, you're more willing to engage with that teacher. So I think, you know, really leaning on the teachers and their comfort level as well. Some teachers might be more comfortable with interacting with the families and, and reaching out with their ideas. You know, this teacher might have a plan of doing this and supporting them if they want to do a fundraiser or, or some way of getting the, the families into their classroom. And be willingness, you know, even with the security concerns of, of letting them come in and be mentors. You know, when, when kids were young in kindergarten, we did the mentoring thing where parents got to come in and help. And I think that just was huge to letting those, those parents feel like they're involved.
Thank you. Keith?
On the note of classroom sizes, we have 6,701 students this year. That's an increase of over 163 over last year. The past five years, we've had over 1,000 new students. We're a growing district, we're bursting at the seams. Our district has some unique challenges. We're 34 miles long and nine and a half miles wide. There's a lot of kids coming into our school district. It's hard to get a lot of parents involved, but I think we can do a little bit of a better job there. On the note of classroom sizes, one more thing is the school board just recently approved an English kindergarten addition. So the number of classroom students in Ellen Hopkins is around 23, 25. It's reducing to 16 or 17. Phenomenal, phenomenal moves there, great steps. As far as parent involvement, that falls on us as parents, as community members. It's getting into the schools, attending the classroom sessions, the fourth grade musical concert last year. Ellen Hopkins, of course, two of my children go there. We have, we are Hopkins, it's a cultural event, fantastic event. We have a Spud Splatter Run at the end of every school year, it's fantastic. You get to throw dye on the kids, the kids are laughing, parents are having a good time. We also have a family fun night. It's coming up, October 13th, everybody show up, public's invited. There are opportunities there, but ultimately it falls on us as parents. My wife and I have this understanding that if it's important to you, you'll be there. So as member of PTAC, the president, we generally have between five and 10. Normally around five or less people attending our meetings. School board can be a very important topic. We just need to get more involvement, whatever that involvement looks like, whether it's running for school board, like we're all doing, getting involved in your school, helping out, volunteering. I think we all can do a little bit better job. It falls on us as parents and everybody to bring in, bring in more people into the schools, have them volunteer, have them help out. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Amy?
It goes back a bit to the needs assessment, the communication assessment. I think it's important to ask each parent, how do you want to be communicated with? I've, I just have to say that this year, my daughter, she's in second grade at Reinertson and her teacher is phenomenal at communication. She set the, the bounds on day one that these are my office hours, call me, email me. First day of school, if you have questions, write them on this notepad because my priority is getting your students settled in my classroom, but I want to make sure that I'm tending to your needs and your questions. She's given us ample opportunities to tell her how we feel, that we want to interact with her when and how. She has invited me to the class, she has invited my mom to be a classroom helper. Through all of the conversations we have had by asking those questions, she has found out that I have interest in being there and has pulled me in. I think that, that is key, is finding out what we need as parents. I think the earlier that any of us as parents know that there's something going on in the school with our child, the better. So how can those messages get out to us real, real time? And that's a key component. I, I think that, like Spence said, us parents, we have to want to be there and that's why we're all here, because we are committed to our kids. And we can influence our peer groups, our friends also to get involved and do those same things that we're doing.
Thank you. Elijah?
Thank you for that question. We talk about, and communication is very important. The teacher need to keep communicating with the parents on a daily basis, it makes sense. And then too, the, the parents need to keep communicating with the teacher in order to know the performance of the students. So it makes sense, you know, right, what we're talking about, communication play, play very, very important part on a daily basis for the kids. And also to, about the sizes of class, it makes sense. Let the district see reason to reduce the sizes. When the sizes are reduced, you have more attention focus on the kids to improve the capacity with the student, I mean with the teachers. Because when the classes is huge, it, it has a lot of distraction. So it makes sense, we reduce our classes, the student then will have more time to be focused on the teacher. And they will learn better. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Kira?
I think the home liaison program is an excellent example of a way to encourage parent interaction with the school and the student. I'd like to see more programs like that, I'd like to see that expanded. I also think that a lot of the issue could be addressed again with more resources. If there were more counselors in schools, we would have more staff at schools be able to reach out to and communicate with parents more often. It's fine to say that teachers should open up the lines of communications, but the teachers are also teaching and doing all of the other things. So it's, it seems a little unfair to put it all on them. So I think, you know, expanded resources and the expansion of the home liaison program would be the best way to encourage parent involvement.
Thank you. Lisa?
I have had my share of school carnivals and et cetera. And I have to say that that's one of the ways that I feel more at home when I'm at a school. The principals are friendlier and, you know, all the teachers are approachable. So you maybe even talk to somebody in the gym that's going to be your kid's teacher next year. It is important for the teachers to do some, to communicate with the parents as well. With Kira, you know, they do have a lot of responsibility already, those teachers, they're, you know, busy night and day trying to get everything ready for our kids to entertain them while they do have them. If there was some form of a system where they could just send a two-sentence email to a specific parent and maybe do that every couple days, at least as a parent, if you're extremely busy, you don't have time to run in. You know, maybe you miss parent teacher conferences because you absolutely cannot, you're out of town on business, whatever. Or your job just doesn't allow it. If you get that little bit of email, you, you then think as a parent, you know what? Hey, they do care. That teacher cares about my kid and noticed that, you know, three days ago, they did awesome on a spelling test or whatever. So I think, you know, we all carry our phones and 95% of them have email right there. And it would just be so easy to be able to converse back and forth. And you know, there, on the other hand, the parent could send a note back that says, hey, you know what? I got your message, thanks for telling me that. And hey, by the way, we have this special event coming up this next week. My kid's probably going to be dog tired, just try to work it through. You know, just something simple.
Thank you. David?
Yes, parental involvement is extremely important in whether children's educations get to the goals they should be. I would like us to maybe model more on the head start where they go out to parents and they go out to the homes. A lot of our new Americans immigrants and lower income people, they're used to that when their children are three and four. And then once they get into the schools, that pretty much ends for most of them. And I think that's a great help, especially in the elementary grades for the, the new immigrants, the refugees and that, to go over and acclimate them to the system. About 20 years ago, I was at an orchestra concert at Thomas Edison and I noticed one thing. There were no people of color in the orchestra for the entire school of a school that was probably 35% people of color. So I kind of wondered, and I thought, this is a terrible thing. We are not getting through to the people so everybody is represented. In the same way, a few years later, I went to Robert Aspen, there was a carnival going on and it was tons of representation from everyone. And what that proves is we are not hitting the people to understand what their motivations are to come out and be involved in school activities. People from different cultures think differently, they have different motivators. I've lived in 11 years of my life in foreign countries during my military service and my father's. We need to look at that cultural and the low income stuff to go over and find out what the motivators are because we are missing them and those children fall behind.
Thank you. I think we're at the point now where we need to move on to our closing remarks. I just want to tell everyone in the audience how, how fortunate you are to have such committed candidates. It's such a good slate of candidates. And certainly if your question didn't get asked tonight, you have a month before the election, please reach out to these candidates and ask them your question. I'm sure they'll respond to you. So we each have a minute for a closing remark. We'd love to hear why you want to be on the school board. And we'll start with David Markwart.
All right, thank you so much for this opportunity tonight and for getting a chance to get to know us better. I have a passion for students in public schools. I care about the children that attend our schools and I understand the school system. I know what goes into the schools and I understand this, and, sorry, I know what goes into the school every day, which gives me a unique perspective. Having an, being an educator on the board is as important because very few educators are making the critical decisions for schools and that needs to change. I'd be honored to hold this position and I'd be certainly honored for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. David Thingbold?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to say, can I just say ditto to half of the answers here? Because this is a great representation, a lot of great ideas. And that's the great part about having a school board where we represent and, and we listen to everybody in our community. If elected, I promise to do my best to be a positive representative in our community and dedicated member to this board. Our school system is growing at a steady rate. This faces with new and different challenges and opportunities. I believe that my experience in both construction and management, I'm an ideal candidate for the Morehead School Board. We look toward the future and look forward to helping Morehead schools stay ahead of the growth and respond accordingly. While being an advocate and doing so responsibly and efficiently as possible to keep our taxpayers' trust. Because without their trust, we don't have any opportunity to do things. I am honest, objective, and dedicated and I look forward to serving this community. I'd like to thank all of you here for your time and consideration. If anybody has any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to reach out and communicate with any one of you. And I appreciate your vote in November.
Thank you. Keith's vote?
The top industry in Morehead is educational services. The school district is actually the largest employer in Morehead. We're a very college town, we're a very education-focused town. The average Morehead resident is 25 years of age. We're a very young population, it's a very growing population as we've been seeing. The trend is that growth will continue. The school board members are the largest body of elected officials in the United States. So please use your exercise right to go out and vote. I went to Probstfield today for absentee ballot, I was in and out in nine minutes. You can do it. November 7th, of course, is the election date, but otherwise absentee balloting is open. I encourage you to stay educated with all the candidates, keep up to speed on everything. I feel I would be a strong candidate with my background, with my children in education. And I look forward to your vote. I hope I'm the bubble you fill in on November 7th. Vote for vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Orell?
Thank you again for this opportunity to come and tell you all about my passion for our district. I think my qualifications are really that I'm a mom. I am very passionate about children and I want to see all children excel. I will commit wholeheartedly to seeing the best that our district can give. I want to push and push and get the best outcomes for everybody involved in the equation. My door is always open and I really feel that I can tailor my communication to what is needed. I have a business background, I grew up with an accountant for a father. My father is an accountant. So I have been very educated on finances. I work with a large corporation managing a large budget and have had to make some tough budget decisions. And I like to think that I do so with the, the greater good in mind and I will commit to making the best decisions that will benefit the most people. I hope to be that bubble that you fill in on November 7th. And I look forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Elijah D. Senior?
I have a passion for the job and I have a thousand experience back home, working with social, working with social security, dealing with people. And my emphasis actually will have to do with kids developing skills and also improving middle class. I work with the school district and I know what is it, as a B.O., middle class employees. The actors make a lot of decision and the board know that. People need to benefit from the school. When I were getting to, when I was doing my citizenship last year, I went to the school board and I talked to them, I said, look, I don't know nobody in Minneapolis. I go and do, do my citizenship, can I get a salary advancement? The people said, what? We don't do salary advancement. I said, wow, this is the United States. You tell me, we both rising, we're one of the greatest country and you don't get salary advance? Those things that team the board need to be lucky on. We need to improve employees' benefit. We got to improve recommendation concerning employees' honor, employees that perform for the mom. They need to be honored. Those things that things that we need to be lucky on, improving the capacity of the, the employees. What, what is the impact and the, the top members benefit? And the middle class are more effective? And the middle class are, that the people that are making difference in this country? We got to look at everybody. This is America, we both of the greatest country. And then I work with the school district, I know what I'm talking about. In no school, the custodian go and sit there. Why you keep the custodian going there and no work to do? They are not security? And no teacher make trash? Custodians stay home too. Why you going there? To do what? To look at the building as a security? And you not employ as a security? The aspect, the board got to look at all of the aspect. And we got to improve the capacity, the performance of employees, honor them. We got to look at Christmas bonus. I talked to one of the boards, oh, this is the district, government get Christmas bonus from a country. I work with social security, we get Christmas bonus. Pop the president ambassador, you did a good job. The board need to study the policy.
Kira Glow?
I'm impressed by the plaques in the Alumni Hall of Fame. Morehead schools have produced alumni that not only make incredible contributions to their local communities, but who are global giants, who have distinguished themselves on an international stage. And I look forward to seeing more names hung in our hallways. We have the great opportunity to shape the future of this community and I find that incredibly energizing. It's a challenge and an opportunity we need to make the most of. Schools are complex human institutions, so we need a simple formula to guide our leadership. We must do everything we can to support student success while managing the public's money, our money responsibly. The lessons I learned from my parents about hard work, fierce love, and the importance of taking care of others are the reasons I'm running for school board. I'm asking for your vote on November 7th so we can support students, teachers, families, and strengthen our entire community.
Thank you. Lisa Hague?
First of all, I'd like to say that even I feel bad, there's only one spot available because you have to admit it. Wouldn't we all be good? I really would like the chance to help shape where our education is going for the future of, the future of our community. Our students are everything. The more they get out of their education, the better we will be, honestly, as a community, as a state, as a, as a nation. It's extremely important that they get the start and the education that they truly deserve. Yeah, I guess I, I just want to be a part of making those decisions and, and making sure that they get everything that they deserve. And since my door is truly open, I am, I am the owner of the quilted ladybug. Anybody has any questions, wants to ask me anything, come on in, I am there seven days a week.
Thank you. David? David Hallman?
First, for the teachers. I was the union steward at my job for seven years and still represent the union on the county insurance committee. I understand the need for appropriate pay, benefits and working conditions for our educators. I'd like to thank the legal women voters for all the work they did to enable this forum to be held. I would also like to thank the library staff and those attending the forum in person and online. On 7 November 2017, the voters of the school district get to elect one of the highly qualified applicants here as a new member of the school board. I'm certain the voters will elect an outstanding person on that day. I hope it will be me, but I will support whomever the voters select and be available to help them make the school district better. Remember that I will concentrate on transparency, taxation and poverty so that all children can obtain a proper education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruel Johnson?
Again, I get the last word. Again, thanks for everyone who came out today and those of you who are listening online, I'd encourage you to get in touch with each of us. I think most of us have Facebook pages that are accessible. I know this format doesn't allow for a lot of in-depth interaction, so I'd encourage everyone just to keep on researching before your vote. I again, hope to earn that vote on November 7th and I hope to bring some practical wisdom to the school board if elected. I know with the growth, again, I keep saying that, but there's a lot of opportunities and challenges that come with that. And I think we need to have a good balance on how we approach decisions. We need to be thoughtful and deliberate on how we look at budgets, how we address the issues that were brought up tonight. I think there's areas that we have more control over than others when it comes to how we fund things and how we prioritize. And we need to be good stewards of what the community has entrusted us. We all have a voice. I would encourage everyone that is engaged to continue to listen to each other and to talk with each other to make sure that we get things right, not just to address the stuff that are challenges currently, but in the future as well. We've got a lot of opportunities and a lot of great things ahead in the city of Morehead, so we're all in this together. So Spuds on three. One, two, three. Go Spuds! Good night.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank the library for co-hosting this for us, for MCAM, for recording this, for rebroadcast and all the volunteers and audience members that are here tonight. And just a bit of shameless self-promotion for the league. Again, we are, we are men and women in the Fargo-Morehead and surrounding communities who are nonpartisan. We have public meetings on the first Friday of every month from noon to 1:00 at the Sons of Norway. Please join us, learn with us, participate. That's what we all, what we all hope to see more of. And thank you all for coming tonight. Good luck on November 7th.